Twenty twenty five, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge right under your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Quorm is present for the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Parking Authority, and Joint Powers Authority.
Okay, so we're gonna have public comment. Any person who's wishing to address the City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority, Parking Authority, or the JPA on any item on the agenda may do so at this time.
Mayor, there is public comment for ordinance zero one, and I have passed it out to Mayor and Council.
All right. Is there any public comment? Hearing no comment, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to item one, CSA one and H one.
Want register.
Receiving file, M one.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January the fourteenth and January sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Consent count, items two through eight.
Go move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, DR one.
Staff report recommending the Mayor and Council members adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five operating budget by introducing a new executive level position within the City Manager's Office designated to support the daily operations of the city and to serve as Acting City Manager during the City Manager's absence.
Move adoption.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, O one.
Staff report recommending the Mayor and Council members introduce an ordinance amending the Inglewood Municipal Code to prohibit the sale of fireworks and restrict the use or display of fireworks to city-sponsored events or public displays at certain venues.
Motion away for the reading.
Second.
Just a confirmation for the City Attorney, this would not, if approved, go into effect for thirty days, is that right, Mrs. City Attorney?
Correct, Mayor.
All right. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, do you want to introduce Councilman Padilla?
I'll introduce.
All right. We don't have to take a vote on the introduction?
No.
No.
Okay, now, O two.
Staff report recommending the Mayor and Council members introduce the updated salary ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five.
Motion away for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
I'll introduce, Mayor.
Introduced by Councilman Morales, A one.
Yes, nothing to report right now, Mayor, since we have to go back in a closed session, I'll reserve my report until after the meeting.
Well darn, so everybody's gotta wait. A two.
Nothing other than that, Mayor, to report.
CM one.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
CC one.
Yes, Mayor, just wanted to wish my friend, my colleague, my right-hand girl here, Councilwoman Falk, a happy birthday. Today is her birthday, so happy birthday to you, Councilwoman Falk. That's all, Mayor.
So, CC two.
Monthly charge report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Receiving file. The successor agency is now in session, CSA two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January the fourteenth and January sixteenth, twenty twenty five as special.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Successor agency members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, CSA three.
Monthly charge report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Receiving file, adjourn the successor agency, the housing authority is in session, H two.
Approval of the minutes of the meetings held on January fourteenth and January sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Housing Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye, H three.
Monthly charge report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Receiving file, adjourn the housing authority, the parking authority is in session, P one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Parking Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Adjourn the parking authority, JPA is in session, JPA one.
Approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Move approval.
Second.
So let me see what I'm doing, Eloy has got me all messed up. So, is it, are we at JPA one or two?
JPA one, Mayor.
Madam City Clerk.
Count, um, excuse me, Joint Powers Authority members Gray.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Chairman Butts.
Aye. Is he JPA two?
Yes, Mayor, monthly charge report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Receiving file, will adjourn the JPA. Ordinance to boards, commissions, and committees. There are none. Public comment, persons wishing to address the City Council on any matter connected with city business not elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you could step to the microphone, sir.
Step to the microphone.
I wanted to talk to you about the fireworks issue in Inglewood. Good afternoon, everyone. Today I stand before you to address an issue that affects the safety and well-being and harmony of our community, the use of fireworks in Inglewood. While fireworks may seem like a symbol of celebration, I believe it is a time we seriously consider prohibiting them for the greater good of the city. They seem to go off at all hours, like twelve o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, it's just crazy. I believe, just a second, first and foremost, fireworks pose a significant safety risk. Every year countless injuries are caused by burns to, for severe trauma. These accidents don't just affect those lighting the fireworks, they also endanger the bystanders, including children and pets. Additionally, fireworks are a leading cause of fires, especially in densely populated areas like Inglewood. A single spark can destroy homes, damage property, and put lives at risk. Secondly, fireworks have a profound impact on the environment and our health. The chemicals used in fireworks release toxic fumes and particulate matter into the air, contributing to pollution and exasperating respiratory issues like asthma. For a community that already faces environmental challenges, this is an unnecessary burden. Lastly, fireworks create noise pollution that disrupts the peace of our neighborhoods. The loud explosions can be terrifying veterans, pets, small children with PTSD, elderly residents, many of whom suffer from anxiety and stress during fireworks displays. As a community that values inclusively and compassion, we must consider the well-being of all our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor and City Council. My name is Patricia Sanchez, I'm a longtime Inglewood resident of thirty years in District Two. I am also Commissioner in District Two for Alex Padilla and a block captain of twenty years. I am here to support the ban on selling and the use of fireworks. This is way long overdue. These fireworks have caused a disruption in our daily lives, waking us from our sleep, having to go to work the following day. They are a fire hazard, and they scare our precious pets and our community and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Council, happy birthday, Councilwoman Dion Falk, we love you so much. My name is Haley, I'm here on behalf of Assemblymember Tina McKinner, who represents Hawthorne, Longdale, Lennox, Del Air, Inglewood, and some West Side communities. I'm here to present a flyer for our disaster preparation event happening on March eighth. We'd love for all community residents to come out. We will have an earthquake shaker simulating a six-point-oh earthquake for about thirty seconds, as well as giving away free, yes, I said free, disaster preparedness kits that will be for a family of four and keep you safe for the first forty-eight hours. Please come and get some resources after the tragedy that we've just had here in Los Angeles. It is important, it can happen to anyone at any time, anywhere, so please come and learn about how to be prepared for disaster, learn to turn your water off, learn what to do if there's a fire in your community, learn how to turn your gas off, and a lot of other great resources. So, I have some flyers here in the back, and I'm happy to hang out and answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Gregory Sneed, fifteen-year resident of Inglewood. I remember the time when common sense used to be more common, and we can all reflect now that it is not so common anymore. And the use of fireworks often invokes the necessary common sense. Because of that, I'm in favor of banning the sale and use of fireworks in the city of Inglewood. Sometimes fireworks can be mistaken for explosives, and we've had explosives detonated. So I support the ban, and we can return to peace and quiet, thank you.
Microphone check, one, two, one, two.
We got you.
First time here, born and raised, Inglewood native. Talking to, against the ban on fireworks. Question, how will banning the sale of safe and sane fireworks stop the entry of out-of-state fireworks from coming in? If we don't have the answer, then banning safe and reasonable fireworks is wrong. We are conflating two different topics and jumping to conclusions. We are redirecting our anger and frustration at the wrong thing. A few months ago, a clown on Enterprise Street decided to have his own Fourth of July celebration, and he had caused a lot of harm and damage. The man was arrested, and the threat has been neutralized, he won't be doing that again. We can't let a few bad apples ruin our peace and cause a ban on safe and reasonable fireworks, we must think logically and not emotionally. Since the nineteen eighties, Inglewood block parties have brought families and neighbors together to celebrate the Fourth of July. As a kid, I remember growing up and vividly remember barbecuing during the daytime, having water balloon fights, riding my bikes and skateboards with my friends, and when nightfall came, we would light our safe and sane fireworks and sparklers and create long-lasting memories with our families and neighbors. What a beautiful Inglewood tradition that I have now get to share with my kids. Banning the sale of safe and reasonable fireworks will not stop the out-of-state fireworks from coming in. Banning, banning the sale of safe and reasonable fireworks will only stop and prevent Inglewood families from recreating these prescient moments with our children on the Fourth of July, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Anita, I've been living in Inglewood over forty years. I live over near Centinelle and La Brea. We have an empty lot behind us, where off the market, it comes into a T-intersection. It's a big building that tore down. When they have the illegal fireworks, they eventually shut down that alley and they party from sunup to sundown, week before and the week after. I mean, the fireworks that they have, they're all illegal, we have a church right there. They have those M-eighties, whatever, blew out one of the church windows. Then they have the illegal fireworks, they shot over into that field, it caught fire, not only once, not only twice, but almost four or five times each year. Anytime anybody wins anything, Lakers, LA, anybody, they shoot off the fireworks. I mean, one time they shot over there, I thought it was, the rouse was exploding, because they just did it like one after another, after another, after another, and it's very dangerous. I live right there, I've been there over forty years. I'm asking you, ban the illegals. Now, like he said about the sane ones, that's cool, but the illegals, I have to hold my ears. You know what I'm saying? It's just ridiculous, and I need someone to do something about it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, we'll close public comment, I have an announcement to make, yes. Wait, 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 hold on a second, slow down now, okay. Is everybody along the wall in line? Okay, so, next, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Butts, my name is BJ Douglas, I'm an actor, comedian, a director, and a veteran, you've been over and visited us, U.S. Vet several times, and I've been on the Power Rangers, worked with Richard Pryor, I worked with Norman Lear, and several other people that are very important. And I created a group called United Rangers of America. It's a group that was created to inspire children to stay in school, which I've done over one thousand five hundred parties, and I do have Highland Elementary Wice to read through a program. What I'm here to do, I autograph, I have a book out that just came out, it's going worldwide, it's called From the Mop to the Top, and the book was written while being at U.S. Vet, so we want to get you involved in this. You and I had talked with Eric when he was in charge of the chamber, because, you know, now that I have the book out, it validates all the television shows I've done, I don't know if you know, the Power Rangers was the number-one kid show, and they made over one point-five billion dollars in the year of nineteen ninety-four, and I was on that team. What I would like to do, is like what I'm doing in Compton, I'm doing parades, doing everything I can to motivate people. We've got to get something going in Inglewood, and I did work out at Rogers Park when I worked on my muscles so I could be on the Power Rangers. I'm really excited, I've been here in Inglewood, like I said, I'm a veteran, and we need to set something up, and I did write an autographed copy for you for the book, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Butts, hello, sir. Sadly for Black Hair Month, I'm a victim of police brutality, and it's sad that you have a police department that has done this and has covered it up for four years now. I've watched them stretch my two-year statutes limitations out, Mayor Butts. After they face-bashed me into a metal gun locker, my body shakes for the rest of my life. They did this after I was waking up from a grandma seizure, and I just think that it's sad that they're allowed to keep this covered up, sir. And I've called Sharice numerous times. Mayor Butts, I feel sad that I emailed you first week that it happened, and months after months, while I was standing at U.S. Vets, you didn't respond. That's why when I hear you say that it's transparency, pardon my French, sir, but that's not. Sir, I emailed you first, for months after I received police brutality. My body still shakes today after I was face-bashed from waking up from a grandma seizure. I've watched your precinct expire my two years of statute of limitations by telling me, you need a lawyer, instead of giving me opportunity to get help, sir. Still to this day, I have proof of falsified imprisonment. I just emailed my information to Mrs. Fernandez in Human Resources. Sir, I just received a letter from the Chief of Police Mark Fontarada saying that you was never arrested at IPD. Meanwhile, painfully, I still have the emails from Lieutenant Scott Collins showing that while you're arrested at IPD, we see you behind bars, but there was no police.
Sir, you're at time.
I apologize, just to let you know, that's crooked, sir, please help me, Mayor Butts.
Sir, you're at time.
Please help me, Mayor Butts.
Sir, you're at time.
Very crooked, sir.
Next speaker.
Yes, thanks for allowing me to speak. This is regarding property taxes for homeowners in Inglewood. If you own a property, you are being taxed for paying into a city worker's pension. So I'm paying a pension to workers, that is not the norm in homeownership. That's a ridiculous fee, I'm gonna elaborate on this, and I'll make it fast. Every single homeowner that I asked in Inglewood, if they were aware, if they're paying into a pension for the workers of the city, they're like, no way, are you serious? I'm like, yeah, look at your tax bill, and I'll finish up with this. So, homeowner A, living on a given block, she's being charged a thousand dollars on her tax bill to the city pension fund. The next-door neighbor, she's paying five hundred, the next-door neighbor is paying three hundred. So, the issue is, everyone should be paying the same, because they're getting the same services as their neighbors, and you gotta look into the legality of that. That is a serious thing that I need Inglewood to take a hard look at, pull funds from other sources, pull them from the billboards or wherever, but I should not be giving eight hundred dollars on my most recent tax bill for city workers if I can't sit down and negotiate their salaries.
Thank you, sir.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council, my name is Richard Clinton, I live in Lotira Village. I've been a citizen of Inglewood since nineteen seventy-one. Regarding the ban on fireworks, safe and sane fireworks are legal in Inglewood, all other kinds are not. I have not heard many complaints about the effect of safe and sane fireworks on the quality of the life in the neighborhoods that I've been in or the people that I've talked to. It's always been the illegal fireworks, the skyrockets, the big boomers, things that are designed to be up in the air and drop embers down, perhaps on somebody's roof. These are already illegal, and I don't see how making safe and sane fireworks, which my children grew up enjoying, will affect the appearance of unsafe and insane fireworks that I agree go on not only on the Fourth of July, but on other occasions as well. And I believe that we can't fix the problem that we're having by making illegal fireworks that are not a part of the problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, no, don't do that, thank you.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, my name is Ronnie Tomcik with the Inglewood Rotary Club. We've been doing this for, then, years, and it's one of our biggest fundraisers to be able to do things in Inglewood for the homeless, for then-veterans, and it just, it just seems that, you know, those fireworks don't go over six feet, okay? And, and to me, it doesn't look like it could reach a, then, rooftop. I mean, we have people that, that, that comes to our stand wanting to buy the then-legal ones, and then we tell them, we can't sell it because it's unillegal. But, but for these fireworks stands is one of the biggest fundraisers to do things in the city of Inglewood for the veterans and then other-than-people. So, if you take that away, it'll, it'll drop a lot of income from these organizations that, that want to do things for the community. That's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Councilmen, and staff, and ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eddie Frye. I live upon Beach and Fairview. I spent ten years in the Marine Corps, and it always says, if it has explosives in it, it's unsafe. And we watched out for that, two tours, and now I watch explosives. Now, safe, safe and sane, you know, fireworks can be opened up, you go on the internet, it'll tell you how to make them into explosives. And I've seen some young people in neighborhood now doing that, they buy the safe and sane, and then they come home, they open them up, they take the gunpowder out, and they try and make them a firework. It doesn't work, okay? So, every time something has an explosive in it, it's unsafe. That's all I want to say, I have, like I say, I saw the gentleman there, Nam, he knows, and probably some other gentleman know that we, we played, we didn't play with fireworks or things like that to service, because we knew what it could do. All right, so, safe and sane, the ones we bring in from Arizona and all those places, they're all unsafe. And I've had bottle rockets on my house many times, and I've seen grass fires that we have to put out. So you know, like I say, sir, safe and sane, the ones out of town, they're all unsafe, okay? Thank you, have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council and staff, my name is John Kelly. I'm with Vice President with TNT Fireworks for the wholesale distributor to eight of the ten organizations who ran last year in the city of Inglewood. I don't live here in Inglewood, but I was born here in nineteen fifty-eight at Daniel Freeman Hospital. I don't know if that hospital still exists. I want to share just a little bit of reviewing the staff report. Some speakers ahead of you have made the distinction between safe and sane fireworks and illegal fireworks. By state law, safe and sane may not travel more than ten feet high, ten feet wide, may not explode, may not dart uncontrollably on the ground. A lot of the description of product that we've heard about this evening or this afternoon are illegal products that are brought in primarily from Nevada and from the federal reservations in the south of Arizona and New Mexico. I looked at statistics garnered by LA County Fire Department going back from twenty twenty-two to two thousand and eleven. There were three incidents with safe and sane fireworks over that period of time. Lastly, I would leave you with, we agree with, with all of the speakers here in efforting to have a safer community, and we feel like the people who are selling the nonprofits, the nonprofits are benefiting, and we feel like, under the ordinance, you're only allowed to shoot them one afternoon and evening a year, and only allowed to sell them four days. The other rest of the year is an legal problem, whether it's a. Whether it's a Dodger victory or Laker victory, yes, that's going off. We want to be part of the team that helps to solve that problem. We ask your consideration.
Okay, sir, a quick question. Are you an Inglewood resident?
No.
No.
All right.
I was born here.
And I, okay.
I live here.
I just wanted to know. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Eddie. I live up on 64th Place in Acacia. Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmen. One thing that nobody's mentioned yet is that I know my neighbors do and what they do is they invite other people over, other families, a lot of them. And they bring their friends with all their fireworks and who knows where they came from. And they party. They drink and shoot off everything they can. My neighbor next to me is a nice guy and everything, but this guy has enough money to buy a lot of fireworks and that's what he does. Just last year, he lit off this roll of fireworks. It had five thousand firecrackers all tied together. And when that was done in the morning, it had about two inches of paper all over the street and they washed it down the gutter into the storm drains, you know? And that's not to mention what's on top of my flat roof. You know, I have to go up there and water it every Fourth of July just before they start the backyard, I water it all down because I don't know what's going to come my way. And the way I see it, the safe and sane stuff is not worth what could happen. We don't want to be a Pacific Palisades because we don't have enough firemen to put out all the fires. You know, we don't want to have to deal with that. It's not worth it. The city's not what it was forty, fifty years ago where it was cool, there was not so many so close to each other, whatever. It's just not worth it nowadays. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Jerry Mull. I live over on Ellis, just next to Beach. And I've been here for literally fifty years. Fifty years as of last December. And this problem has gotten worse and worse and worse over the years. This last year, I was standing in my backyard and I could swear I was over in Vietnam or something. It was exploding, three hundred and sixty degrees around me, all the bombing going off and explosions. It's terrible. And like the people have mentioned before, this goes on for weeks before and weeks afterwards. And I think this so-called safe and sane, I don't know, these guys nowadays are able to modify this stuff into all kinds of crazy stuff. If they're able to get this stuff, it's so hard to control what's safe and sane and what's not safe and sane. I think that's the real problem. You need to crack down on all of it. And I agree with a bunch of people here today who said that we need to get rid of it. It's time to stop after what happened in Pacific Palisades and elsewhere around Altadena, what have you. This should be a lesson to us to be more careful. We don't know what can happen with these crazy fireworks. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name's Linda Adams. I live on West Fairview. And I adopted a dog two and a half years ago that was pretty chill. And now she's got PTSD in the worst way. Everything sets her off. And I've got a dog I sometimes don't like. And these fireworks right across the street, as soon as the boom goes off, I can go out and see the smoke and I'll usually call the police and say, you can see it. Go look out the window right now. But I just want it to stop. And there are people with PTSD. You know, we have veterans, animals, pets, you know, they always, the animal care people always give the figures for how many dead animals they found and how many stray animals they have found after the Fourth of July. And it's hundreds, it's in the hundreds. So it's just not a good, you know? And I am extremely sensitive. I don't know why I never could go to my dad's shooting matches back home because I couldn't even with earplugs and with the earmuffs things on. It still just sends me. And so I beg you, please, stop it. I think we get enough tax revenue from everything on Century Boulevard. We don't need it from fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any more speakers?
Would it be possible to hear from the police, to hear what they have to say?
No, sir, it would not.
Hello.
Hello, sir.
Carlos Davis. I'm a representative of All Families Matter Counseling Center. I am also an Inglewood resident. I was born, raised here. So I've heard everyone's arguments on the fireworks, sane and non-sane. So with us and the nonprofits, you have to understand that it's not the sales of the fireworks that we look forward to. It's the help of your communities. We don't take this money and help ourselves. We take this money and we help our communities. My organization personally, we look forward to helping families. Excuse me, it's a little emotional. We look forward to helping kids, families, and things that we can't do at home. So when we have these events, like the gentleman said, there's a neighbor that literally calls in the U.S. Army for fireworks. Okay, that's not what we're talking about. That's just the trash and things left over. Yes, it's very disturbing and it's very noise-wracking and it's very displeasing to some. But let's say what it is to others. It's a warm bed at night. It's a warm meal. It's discussing the things that is bothering you as a person, but you don't have the funds to do it. So that's what these programs do. These programs serve to help those that don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. It looks like we have one more speaker.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. My name is DeJoy Robinson and I too am one of the nonprofits that sell the safe and sane fireworks. The gentleman that just spoke made a very good point. It has nothing to do with the fireworks that we as the nonprofits do this. We do this to help the community. Our agency help youth, homeless, disenfranchised families stay together. We have all kind of programs that we would not be able to do for low-income and no-income clients unless we had the funding from the fireworks stand. We don't use it for any self-profit, any employees' fees or pays or anything like that. We use it to give back to the community. Now, I as an Inglewood resident and my business had been here in Inglewood for the last almost thirty-five years, we need as a nonprofit, because people aren't donating and the finances that are, everything is going up. And we even had to leave our building over here on the bread because the rent went up and they're moving people out. Now, like the young lady said, on Century Boulevard, there's a whole lot of stuff, they cover a whole lot of stuff, but it doesn't help the community. It doesn't pick the homeless people up off the street. It doesn't give them a hot meal, like the gentleman said. It doesn't take the boys out and show them how to work on cars. Kids don't even know nowadays how to put water in a car, but they want to drive. Well, somebody got to teach them. Somebody has to teach the little girls that it's not okay to dress a certain way. We have charm classes. We have all kind of things to help the community, help the family, help the people that actually build Inglewood, that's about Inglewood, okay? I heard one gentleman that said something against safe and sane that might be something to consider. But the rest of the stuff people are talking about, that's the illegals. We have nothing to do with the illegals. There's nothing we can do about that.
Ma'am, I have to call you at time. So you've had a stand in Inglewood for how long?
I've had a stand here in Inglewood for about five years, six years.
What do you think you net every year from that stand?
Roughly about eight, eight thousand to pay for the rent and the utilities and paying for some of our clients to come free. We have free programs.
So you net eight thousand from your sales?
Yes, sir.
Well, I need to consider that. Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay, with that, we're going to close public comment. I have an announcement to make.
Mayor, if I could really quickly, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes, really quickly.
I just want to correct something that you asked me earlier. I was under the impression this was the second reading. This is the first reading.
Yeah.
So this will come back at the next meeting. It'll take effect thirty days after that.
Exactly. I want to make it clear to people this is not final until they know that they got like sixty days to persuade us, right? All right.
Thank you.
Good deal. So all hope is not lost. Now with that finally, I want to make an announcement. You know, Sharice Rhodes is my executive assistant and she's had that position for a little over two years. She's a millennial and I hired a younger person because I'm getting to be a senior person. And she has done such a great job in adding to the connectivity we've had with the younger generations. Just really dedicated. Now fortunately, she's really expanded her reach and she will be leaving city service February twenty-eighth to Open Roads Enterprises, a brand management, community initiatives and consulting services business. And ordinarily, when people move on, you know, they just fade away. And she really wanted to speak to the city and the council and just let you know how she's felt about her time with the city. So Sharice, if you're still here, could you come forward?
All right, can everybody hear me?
Not yet.
Not yet.
That's Sharice?
Sharice, pull it closer to you.
All right, so I don't miss anything. A little over two years, I was at a crossroad in my personal life. Mayor Butts, you believed in me, gave me the opportunity of a lifetime. Words are inadequate to express the depth of my emotion or the weight of my gratitude. Today, as I formally submit my resignation, I find myself again at a crossroad. However, this time either choice is a win. If I stay, I win. If I move on, I have the opportunity to fulfill my life's dreams to run my own company. This is not merely an announcement of my planned departure. It is sincere, it is a sincere expression of my gratitude of profound respect and gratitude, a highlight to the chapter of my life that will remain forever etched in my soul. My last official day, serving as executive assistant to the mayor, will be February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. However, my commitment to the city of Inglewood and its growth remains unwavering. Working under your leadership, Mayor, has been nothing short of transformative. In this time I've spent here, I've witnessed not just the brilliance of your vision, but the power of your kindness and your heart. Your genius lies not only in the grand initiatives that has reshaped this city, but in the way you have inspired myself and others to believe in something greater than themselves. You have built a legacy that will outlive us all and to have been a part of it is a privilege I will cherish forever. It has been an honor to build relationships with our esteemed council members of the city council. Councilwoman Gloria Gray, Councilman Alex Padilla, Councilman Eloy Morales and Councilwoman Dion Falk. Happy birthday. Your leadership, dedication and deep commitment to Inglewood have been an inspiration. I have had the privilege of learning from all of you, collaborating at times to push the needle forward and witnessing firsthand the impact of your work as a team. The collective vision and tireless efforts of this administration have driven progress, fostered unity and ensured a brighter future for generations to come. This city, under your guidance, as chief executive and in partnership with the council, has become a beacon of hope, resilience and endless possibilities. The lessons I've learned from you all, the value of integrity, the courage to innovate and the art of uniting people under a common purpose are lessons that will guide me for the rest of my life. You have shown me what it means to lead with wisdom and compassion and for that, I am eternally grateful. To every remarkable executive, director, employee, city clerk, city treasurer, chief, our police department and city manager, city attorney. You guys have been the heartbeat of this city and it's been an honor to have crossed paths with you all. Each of you have inspired me with your dedication, creativity and relentless pursuit of excellence. Together, we have achieved milestones that were once dreams and the camaraderie we've shared will remain one of the most treasured aspects of my journey. As I step into this new chapter, I do so with immense gratitude and excitement for what lies ahead. I look forward to continuing my services to this great city by helping to foster small businesses, small business innovation and economic growth. But most importantly, continuing to support the city to enable our residents to achieve their personal dreams of prosperity. Mayor Butts, thank you for believing in me, for giving me the opportunity to be a part of history. Your leadership has not only shaped Inglewood, but has profoundly shaped me and my future. And for all of you, I stand forever in gratitude, forever in awe and forever inspired. Thank you.
Sharice, if you could say there, the Assemblywoman's office has something for you.
I'll bring it up close. On behalf of Assemblymember Tina McKinner and the California Legislature of the Assembly, we present the certificate of recognition to Ms. Sharice Rhodes for your outstanding efforts as the Chief of Staff to Mayor Butts. Congratulations on your achievements while working with the city of Inglewood. Your hard work and dedication to this community and its surrounding neighbors is to be commended. On behalf of the 61st Assembly District, thank you for your service and may you have continued success with your future and we will miss you tremendously.
So we'll stand by for a minute in case the council have any comments for you. Councilwoman Gray, I would give you the first opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. What a surprise. Well, let me congratulate you for taking a big step. It takes courage and I know that you will be successful. Since I've been on the council, you've always been very helpful to me, very professional. And so I know you have the skills and the tenacity to do what you want to do. It's always great to see women step out and do what they want to do. And so whatever I could do to be supportive of you in the future, please keep in touch. Thank you for what you've done for me since I've been on the council. Congratulations again and I commend you for your courage. So thank you, Sharice.
Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And Sharice, you and I had a little conversation yesterday and I just want to reiterate that, you know, I wish you nothing but success. And in life, the things that we do, we don't do them for ourselves. We do them for our family, for our loved ones, so that we can provide for them and give them a better future. And you have that little one at home, your son. And we talked about how this is a way for you to continue to provide for him and to set the bar so that he can see what his mom is doing and how successful she is. That being said, thank you. Thank you for your leadership here, your commitment and I wish you nothing but continued success and you will always be a part of this family here in the city of Inglewood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just tell Sharice, I will miss you.
Councilwoman Falk.
All right, I can't see you.
Birthday flowers.
I just want to wish you the very best. I've watched you grow over the last couple of years and I've seen and I've seen how you have been able to rise to the occasion for different events, working with the mayor, and it's not easy to work with this mayor. And so you have done it well. And I know that now that you're going to step out on your own and do your own thing, I know that you're going to be very successful. And so for me, I say that I know that it's not goodbye because I know you're going to continue to grow with Inglewood, and we're going to always be able to work together. So, much success and rock it out.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, did you have any words?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Yes, of course. It's good to see you do what you do. I've told you all the time that you're a bad mama-jamma. I'm proud of what you've done. You have proven yourself. That's the thing. You've proven who you are. The mayor brought you in, but you proved yourself. And I'm proud of you. I'm proud to say that I know who you are. You know my name. I know your name. And as time goes on, we won't be forgotten. We're going to continue to stay together and keep rising to wherever we have to go because it's still not the finish line. So I can't wait to continue your success, my success, and everything that is coming your way. You deserve it, so keep on with your bad self. Thank you.
Madam City Treasurer.
This really came as a surprise. You have my number. You could have called me. This really caught me off guard. I'm over here trying to hold back the tears, like, what? I just want to say I'm so proud of you. When I decided to run for treasurer, you was one of the ones that encouraged me. And so I'm going to return the favor. I'm going to encourage you. It takes a lot of faith and a lot of strength to step out. And I just want to commend you and just tell you, keep moving forward. And I am so proud and happy for you. So, yeah, but we're going to talk after this meeting. That's all, Mayor.
Councilman Ella Morales, the dean.
Sharice, I wish you would have done something nice for me so that I could talk about it right now.
No way!
No, honestly, I'm going to tell you, you know, Sharice, you know, congratulations. I told you that about a week ago. And, you know, few people, first of all, let me just say, you are literally an extremely intelligent woman. You know, I saw it. You've done a lot here. You know, Dion said managing the mayor is a big job, but navigating through that relationship while you have to navigate through all the other relationships, that's the key. And you see it. You see the angles. You build your own strategy to get through to what needs to happen. When folks need to communicate with the mayor, you help that process. And you help it by understanding both sides. So that's a gift. The congratulations comes because you're so young, and you take, you see the opportunities. You saw this one. You made it work for you. You learned, and now you saw the next opportunity, and you're going to take advantage of that. Alex mentioned, you know, we do for our family, and that's what you're doing. And, you know, I got to tell you, you know, doing what you did as a single mom is amazing, and that should be commended just by itself. So, congratulations. I know you'll be around, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
So I'm just going to say in closing, you know, she started talking to me about this two months ago, and showing me like business perspectives and things like this. And I said, what are you talking about, right? I said, this check comes every other Thursday, every other Thursday. And you're talking about going to something where you got to make it happen, month in, month out. So I thought she was like clowning, right? And then she came and brought me her draft of a letter of resignation. And I said, okay, are you serious? Okay. And I just want you to know this, that in my career, I produced fifteen chiefs of police. Five of them female. In this city, we produced about six female managers in department heads. But everybody went to the thing where they got that check every other Friday, every other Thursday. You're the first that I've seen go out and fly away from the nest. It takes a lot of courage, a lot of courage. So know this, though, you're always welcome here. Congratulations. And with that, we're going to recess to close session to finish an interminable conversation. All right? So thank you, everyone. All right? So thank you, everyone.